بِاللَّهِ مِنَ الشَّيْطانِ الرَّجِيمِ بِسْمِ اللَّهِ الرَّحْمَٰنِ الرَّحِيمِ يَا أَيُّهَا الَّذِينَ آمَنُوا كُتِبَ عَلَيْكُمُ الصِّيَامَ كَمَا كُتِبَ عَلَى الَّذِينَ مِن قَبْلِكُمْ لَعَلَّكُمْ تَتَّقُونَ وَقَالَ اللَّهُ عَزَّ وَجِلَ شَهْرُ رَمَضَانَ الَّذِي أُنزِلَ فِيهِ الْقُرْآنُ هُدًى لِلنَّاسِ وَبَيِّنَاتٍ مِنَ الْهُدَابِ وَالْفُرْقَانِ فَمَن شَهِدَ مِنْكُمُ الشَّهْرَ فَلْيَصُمْ وَمَن كَانَ مَرِيضًا أَوْ عَلَى سَفَرٍ فَعِدَّةٌ مِنْ أَيَّامٍ أُخَرْ يُرِيدُ اللَّهُ بِكُمُ اللِّيْسْرَ وَلا يُرِيدُ بِكُمُ العُصر صَدَقَ اللَّهُ مَولاناَ العظيمَ وَصَدَقَ رَسُولُهُ النَّبِيُّ الْكَرِيمَ وَنَحْمَ عَلَى ذَلِكَ مِنَ الشَّاهِدِينَ وَالشَّاكِرينَ وَالْحَمْدُ لِلَّهِ رَبِّ الْعَالَمِينَ اللَّهُمَّ نَفَعْنَا بِمَا عَلَّمْتَنَا وَعَلِّمْنَا مَا يَنفَعُنَا وَزِدْنَا عِلْمًا يَا رَبَّ الْعَالَمِينَ وَقُلْ رَبِّ زِدْنِي عِلْمًا أَمِينَ الْحَمْدُ لِلَّهِ the blessings of Allah (ﷻ) that He has made us amongst a fortunate people that will be Insha Allah witnessing another blessed month of Ramadan in our life and we ask Allah (ﷻ) to grant us His strength, the ability and the life to be able to benefit from this month this is why this Dua has been given to us اللَّهُمَّ بَارِكْ لَنَا فِي شَعْبَانِ وَبَلِّغْنَا رَمَضَانَ and the purpose of the Dua is to gain the blessings of Allah (ﷻ) now of course there are many components to when it comes to preparation of Ramadan and how are we going to enter in this month and as the days will go forward even during the month of Ramadan, we are going to have sessions Insha Allah for reminders for us to maximize the benefit there are three major things that I would like to touch upon when it comes to the month of Ramadan number one is what should be our behavior towards the month of Ramadan? and that is the mentality of of gaining the mercy of Allah (ﷻ) that my behavior is something that is going to bring the رحمة of Allah right? that is something that we need to enter into Ramadan with that my actions my way of doing things my obedience to Allah (ﷻ), all of that translates so I can be a person of that person who is receiving the رحمة of Allah (ﷻ) so the first thing that I want to talk about when it comes to the month of Ramadan it's the etiquette of the place where we are sitting because Alhamdulillah, we are able to come to the Masjid during the month of Ramadan frequently and this is a blessing of Allah (ﷻ) but when we don't know the adab, the etiquette the importance of the house of Allah (ﷻ), then the maximized the benefit goes away Rasulullah (ﷺ) said that when a believer, when a person comes to the Masjid and he stays in the Masjid in a حالة of wudu, in the stage of wudu and just sitting down, either he is reciting Quraan, remembering Allah or just sitting down and waiting for Salaah to start whenever it starts the angels make Dua for him اللَّهُمَّ رَحَمُهُ اللَّهُمَّ مَغْفِرْ لَهُ O Allah have mercy on him and O Allah forgive his sins so our entry into the month of Ramadan should be in the temperament of the receiving the mercy of Allah (ﷻ) we are the people who are receiving the رحمة of Allah (ﷻ) so now when we come to the house of Allah, we have to keep that in mind with two conditions, if a person is involved in two things then the angel stops making Dua number one is, he is in the Masjid without wudu right? it's not required to have wudu when you come to the Masjid but it is required to be in wudu for the angels to make Dua for you you can come to the Masjid without wudu but if you want to be the recipient of the two supplications of the angels and that is the supplication of رحمة and مغفرة, then we have to be in the wudu, in the stage of wudu number two he is not involved in worldly talks and what can be a worldly talk? you got a nice car only that much that's a worldly talk what's the score? that's a worldly talk what are you doing tonight? that's a worldly talk when you get involved of talking about worldly affairs in the house of Allah (ﷻ), then what happens? the angels stop making Dua for you so these are two things, remember you are staying in the Masjid for, let's say, five hours a day you know, counting all the Salaah and Taraweeh and everything approximately five to six hours a day, you're gonna be spending your time in the house of Allah (ﷻ) now in that five to six hours we can just be the entitled of the رحمة of Allah and مغفرة of Allah (ﷻ) so that's why we have to make sure that we understand the value of the house of Allah (ﷻ) so number one is not to be involved in worldly affairs, if you don't have wudu, you make wudu and be in the Masjid with wudu number three is respect the house of Allah (ﷻ) right? respect the house of Allah (ﷻ) and how are we going to respect the house of Allah (ﷻ) by giving importance to a house of Allah (ﷻ) and talking about the importance of the house of Allah (ﷻ), adab that's why we have adabul Masjid why? because Masjid is a place of worship a lot of people talk, right? a lot of people are involved in other things, you know just today, you know, that hazard right there we have in the Jum'ah and I was standing here giving the second Khutbah and it was a scene to watch one brother is taking the chair and the other person is pulling the chair from him and the other guy is taking the chair again and he's pulling the chair and it's just multiply happening while the Khutbah, the Imam is giving the Khutbah right? so a lot of things happen in the Masjid, our behavior towards it, it's taking us away from the رحمة of Allah (ﷻ) talking to people, even leaving gaps in the middle of the صوف right? if you have gaps in the middle of the صوف then that's taking you away from the رحمة of Allah (ﷻ) so when we are in the Masjid, we have to be in the best behavior we can ever think of the best way possible because who, why, this is Masjid is بيت الله is the house of Allah (ﷻ) Masjid is the house of Allah so that's why we should come in the Masjid with right foot and first reciting the Dua and keeping ourselves in the remembrance of Allah while we are in the vicinity of the house of Allah (ﷻ) talking loud even, you know, I'm gonna say this a lot of people have the habit of saying Salaam loudly when they enter the Masjid, that's not right why? because there are people involved in Thikr there are people involved in Quraan recitation, there are people involved in Salaah and that is against the etiquette yes if there is nothing happening, you wanna come inside and say Salaam, that's fine but just to say Salaam loudly to the people who are involved in something, the Fuqaha have mentioned كراهية, disrespect in the Masjid, you have, yes, if you meet someone, you can say Salaam alaykum, no problem and that's not considered a worldly talk but just to say Salaam out loudly when you are entering, that is even considered disrespect we have to be very careful when you come to the house of Allah, why? because in this, staying in the Masjid can either make you receive reward or can have your reward taken away from you the reward can be away from you, taken away from you so the first thing in preparation to the month of Ramadan is to respect the house of Allah (ﷻ) and number two, to respect every single person comes to the house of Allah (ﷻ) whether he's small, he's big, his uncle, his elderly, brothers, sister, everybody that is the place where you should show your best behavior not our worst behavior when we show our best behavior to the house of Allah, Allah (ﷻ) grants us the ability to maximize the benefit, so that's number one that is connected to having to receive the رحمة of Allah (ﷻ) okay? now, as we know many from many Ahadith about the month of Ramadan, the three main theme of the month of Ramadan are رحمة مغفرة عتق من النار mercy, forgiveness and deliverance from the fire of hell when the first night of Sha'ban would appear, Salman Farasi رضي الله عنه says that Rasulullah (ﷺ) addressed the companions and he said that upon you Allah is sending a very blissful month and in this blissful month there is a night which is better than 1000 night of worship, which is referring to later in the Quran and this month is the month of patience and the reward of patience is Jannah this month is the month of sympathy, Al-muasat whoever ease the burden of his employee during the month of Ramadan Allah will ease his burden on the day of judgment whoever feeds a fasting person in the month of Ramadan Allah (ﷻ) will give him water from the house of Rasulullah (ﷺ) لا تضما بعدها أبداً that after which a person will never feel thirsty and upon which the Sahabah said, "Ya Rasulullah, none of us can afford to feed people" Prophet ﷺ said, "Even a date or a glass of water or a glass of milk will give you that reward of feeding the fasting person" this entire month, it has been given to the believers so that a believer can be a believer he can remain a believer, he can stay a believer those who don't value the month of Ramadan their ability to worship Allah, their ability to stay away from sins decreases because in the month of Ramadan, you don't have the forces of Shayatin, as the Hadith describes صُفِدَ الشَّيَاطِينَ that Shayatin have been locked up in the month of Ramadan so they're not able to make people do as bad as a person would do outside the month of Ramadan the bad still exist and the existence of this bad is because of نفسي there are two things that makes a person do evil إن النفس لا أَمَّا رأَ وَإِنَّ الشَّيْطَانَ it's your own نفسي and it's شيطان what happens is, شيطان influences the نفس and نفس becomes the promoter of the action to come into existence now that motivator is not there, the نفس still there but the motivator of that نفس is شيطان and he's not there so now the نفس is not motivated enough this is why it is easier for a person even having a very heavy meal after an Iftar that he can come to the Masjid, even though he's feeling lazy but he forces himself and that force is easy for him for you to do Ibadah in the month of Ramadan becomes easy and the reason why Allah made it easy for us because Allah wants us to do this Allah says, "I will lock up the Shayatin who are the great influence of your bad action, so let's focus" let's bring your, this is a distraction, we're taking the distraction away from you so you can be focused on what you need to do and how you need to do so the first thing is being able to receive the رحمة of Allah (ﷻ) and that is going to happen by what? spending less time in sleeping and spending more time in Ibadah one of the things that we find in the month of Ramadan is to be able to sleep more so that we can kill time especially on the weekends, weekdays a person is working, running around here and there, he's doing his things but weekend what? after Suhur, go to sleep till the last minute of Zuhar pray Zuhar, get up, pray your Zuhar after that still, you know, sit around your bed and then Asr, you look at the time, okay, it's hour and a half so let me just get ready to have some Iftar right? a lot of time is being wasted because a person thinks that I'm not getting enough sleep right? long Taraweeh, I'm not getting enough sleep, so let me catch up on those but if you see in the life of the Pious they abandon sleep throughout the month of Ramadan, they only slept for a few hours and the rest of the time was just dedicated in the Ibadah of Allah (ﷻ) three major Ibadah are for Ramadan major Ibadah, number one is this is after Faraid if you're missing Faraid, then you're focusing on these three major things, then it's not going to work Faraid is the first thing, whatever فريضة is it try to do it كامل, try to do it fully what is the كامل فريضة? to be able to do it in the house of Allah (ﷻ) to be punctual in praying so Faraid, after that, three major things number one is Dua number two is Thikr and number three is recitation of Quraan that's individual Ibadah individually, these are the three major things that we need to be involved in the month of Ramadan right? Dua Thikr and Quraan recitation and Quraan recitation is the highest category of Thikr and Quraan recitation is even compensated, it has been taken over Dua because the Hadith of Nabi (ﷺ) that Allah (ﷻ) says that if my Kalaam's recitation does not give time to anyone to make Dua I will give him more than I give to those who make Dua because شهر رمضان أنزل فيه القرآن that is the highest and this is why you find in the life of the Pious that they were stick to the Kitab of Allah (ﷻ) Ibn Hajar al-Asqalani, a great scholar of Hadith when the time of Ramadan will come, he will close all the books of Hadith and the only book that you will see him reciting throughout the whole day and night is Quraan that's it Imam Abu Hanifa, Noamman bin Thabit rahimahullah he used to recite sixty-one Quraan in the month of Ramadan and that's not something that one person has documented there are many people who have documented this about Imam Abu Hanifa sixty-one Quraan in the month of Ramadan one Quraan in the day, one Quraan in night and one Quraan in the Taraweeh prayer so Quraan is the Ibadah of Ramadan, if you are able, if your regular recitation is one page then make it half a Juz a day in the month of Ramadan if your regular recitation is one Juz then make it two Juz in the month of Ramadan so whatever recitation you have on a regular basis increase it in the month of Ramadan right? because why? the Quraan gives you its نور in the month of Ramadan when you open the Quraan and you're about to recite, what is the first thing you say? أعوذ بالله من الشيطان الرجيم why? because when you're reading Quraan, you got thoughts and thoughts coming into your mind I forgot to text him forgot to pick up the groceries Amazon delivery has come or not what's for dinner, what's for Iftar? all the thoughts come into your mind as soon as you start reading and sometimes it's so provoking that you say, "Okay, I will just read this later, let me take care of this, otherwise I will forget later" so that is you listen to شيطان and this is why Allah says فإذا قرأت القرآن فاستعد بالله من الشيطان الرجيم شيطان is the only force that's stopping you from Quraan recitation and in the month of Ramadan, he's locked up so Allah says, "Go" Quraan is yours شيطان is not there involve yourself in it, learn from it, exercise it, recite it understand it these are all, our entire month of Ramadan should revolve around the Kitab of Allah (ﷻ) and the Quraan that is read or heard in Salaah it is better than the one that is read or heard outside of Salaah you know, a lot of people have this habit that they listen to the Quraan you know, playing YouTube or any other podcast or whatever they're using while they're going to work and all of that stuff, but they can't stand in Taraweeh and listen right? in Taraweeh, they bunk and then, yes, I listen to my Quraan every day when I go to work the Quraan that is recited live the Quraan that is recited in the Masjid, the Quraan that is recited while you are in your prayer that is the most virtuous because this is the time that the نور of Allah is coming down so this is the first thing that we need to attach ourselves Quraan recitation these are individual Dua's, individual recitation, apart from the one that is recited in the Masjid everybody should be involved in reciting the Quraan by themselves number two is Dua, the month of Ramadan is the month of asking Allah the Prophet ﷺ said لِيَسَّاءَ مِنْ دَعْوَةٍ مُستَجَابَةٍ for a fasting person, there is one accepted Dua that he gets every day one Dua Allah will accept from you every single day of each day of the month of Ramadan so what we need to do is, we need to make a list there are thirty things that I want to ask Allah in this month and as soon as the first days of Ramadan starts from morning till evening you keep on asking Allah in your heart about that and in thirty days, Allah will give you thirty things you're asking and if you want مغفرة, then every day مغفرة which is the Dua of Abdullah bin Abbas رضي الله عنه يا واصع الفضل إغفر لي يا واصع الفضل إغفر لي O the possessor of great virtue, forgive my sins so number two is Dua and what is Dua? Dua is a weapon of a believer through Dua, a person is able to achieve what he's not able to achieve through other means right? so that's why Allah (ﷻ) gives in the month of Ramadan we have to just become those who are receiving those gifts from Allah (ﷻ) and number three is remembrance of Allah (ﷻ) why do we need to remember Allah excessively in the month of Ramadan so we are able to control our mouth? if we don't keep our tongue busy with something good then it will be utilized in something that is bad and this is why it is mentioned to say some, it is better to stay quiet than to say something that is wrong why? because staying quiet will protect you from sin and speaking will put you into sin there are, so the first thing we said to gain the mercy of Allah (ﷻ) is to have less amount of, it decrease the amount of our rest, increase the amount of our Ibadah we talked about the three major Ibadah that we need to be involved in in during the month of Ramadan, it is Dua, Thikr and Quraan recitation Quraan recitation being number one, then Dua then Thikr now, the second action that we need to stay away from during the month of Ramadan is excessive eating controlling our consumption and the controlling our consumption is from two types الكمية number one is the amount that you eat and number two, the type of food you eat so when it comes to type of food, of course, إن الله طيب, Allah is pure and Allah accepts pure if it's not Halal, then it's going to ruin my Ibadah this is why Nabi (ﷺ) said ربّ صائم ليس له من صيامه إلا الجُوع وربّ قائم ليس له من قيامه إلا السح that there are many people who fast, but at the end of the day, they don't get anything of their fasting and one of the reasons is not to be mindful of Halal and Haram the reward is gone number two is being able to eat less sufficient enough that we have the strength to carry out our fasting and we have the strength to stand in the night during the Taraweeh prayer it is not the way that we eat that it becomes difficult for us to do Ibadah throughout the whole day and throughout the whole night and that will get the مغفرة of Allah (ﷻ), which is the second theme of the month of Ramadan, because through consume, by if a person is able to control his diet, that means he's able to control his نفس and controlling of نفس is something that makes a person entitled of the مغفرة of Allah (ﷻ) and number three which is a very important thing is to get deliverance from the fire of hell, we need to control our tongue we need to control our tongue and that is the most effective and the deadliest sin that is found in every single individual a lot of times the Prophet ﷺ said, whoever leaves a valid argument whoever leaves a valid argument for the sake of Allah I would give him the responsibility of making him a house in Jannah so we don't need to get in arguments, no there is no way, no need to prove how know how much you know only Allah is the one that should know about our quality that how much valuable we are in the sight of Allah (ﷻ) people don't need to know how valuable we are my value is with Allah (ﷻ) and my connection is with Allah (ﷻ) the amount of time we spend in talking to people if we can spend that much amount of time talking to Allah (ﷻ), how great our life can be because the tongue of a person it is the deadliest way that will take, this is why Nabi (ﷺ) said to Ma'ad هل يكوب الناس في نحورهم إلا حصائدو السنتهم أقوم أقال عليه السلام that only thing that is throwing people into the fire of hell, it's the misuseage of their tongue if we are able to control our tongue, we are able to control our fast if we are able to control our tongue, we are able to gain مغفرة if you are able to control our tongue, we are able to be in the mercy of Allah and if we are able to control our tongue, we are able to get the deliverance from the fire of hell so these are spiritual aspects of, you know, spending the time of Ramadan So these are spiritual aspects of, you know, spending the time of Ramadan. Then you have the fasting, which itself is a great Ibadah. When a person is in this, in the stage of Saum, he's in a great Ibadah. This is a great Ibadah of Allah (AJ), being in fasting. And not to let go your fast for small, small reasons. Person has a headache, I'm not gonna fast today, headache. Marz. Allah knows which is our marz. You see Sahabah, even though they had the opportunity not to fast during travels and so difficult it was for them to travel during those times, they still used to fast. Why? Because let me tell you one thing. Even if you miss one fast in the month of Ramadan for a valid reason, for a valid reason, the reward that you're going to get cannot be compensated if you were to fast the entire year. If you were to fast the entire year, you cannot get the reward of one day's fast during the month of Ramadan, even if you missed your fast with Uthar. So if you don't, if you have a choice to fast, you can, you know, go over the difficulty and fast. This is more better than not fasting. However, if you have the Uthar not to fast and you don't fast, there is no sin involved. But just to respect the month of Ramadan, if a person is able to fast, he should fast. And this is why Nabi (ﷺ) said that a person who doesn't fast during the month of Ramadan, he is Mahroom, deprived from the mercy of Allah (AJ). Because he's not getting his Maghfira done in the month of Ramadan. So these are a few things and of course, you know, when it comes to fasting, making sure we start our fast during the day early in the morning. Right? A lot of times we, we start arguing about the calendar timings, right? How many minutes before Adhan? Right? Two minutes, five minutes, four minutes. Now of course, these calendars are made for cautious reasons. The actual time is Subuh Asad. But there is no sin in stopping early. It's not that you're going to get sin. Unless you stop 30 minutes early, then you will lose the Barakah of Suhr. "Tasaharu fa innafis suhuri Barakah." Prophet ﷺ said, "Make sure you do Suhr because in Suhr there is Barakah." So, even if you don't want to eat in Suhr, a lot of times they, people eat at night. After Taraweeh, go home, Kaya, and then knock down to Fajr. You know? No, eat in the morning. Eat something in the morning. Sacrifice the day, the eating time after Taraweeh. Eat in the morning because this is Barakah. This is my desire and this is my Nabi's desire. What I'm going to do, my Nabi's desire or my desire? Right? And then, throughout the day when we are fasting, keep our fast in check. Did I do something that will nullify, that will nullify the reward of my fasting? Have I said something that will nullify the reward of my fasting? How can I make my fast more better? What are the actions that I can do while I'm fasting to gain the Rahmah of Allah (ﷻ)? Because even the smell of the mouth of this person, it is more dear to Allah (AJ) than the fragrance of Musk. Right? So, when I'm going to talk, when I'm going to recite the Kitab of Allah, Allah (ﷻ) is loving this smell of my mouth. How beautiful that is. And then, Dua before Iftar. Because this is the most important time of the day where Duas are being accepted. So make your Ramadan in such a way that when Ramadan is about to end, you feel sad inside, that is going away. If you are feeling sad when the Ramadan is exiting, when Ramadan is finishing, then you have received the blessings of the month of Ramadan. And if you're feeling happy that from tomorrow, no more fasting, then you've lost your Ramadan. The feeling comes from inside. Right? It needs to develop from inside. That you have been hooked onto your Ibadah so much that now leaving it, it's, it's making you feel, it's making you feel sad. "Ida saratka hasanatuk, wa sa'atkasyi'atuk fa anta mu'min." Prophet ﷺ said, "If your good actions are making you happy and if your bad actions are making you sad, then you are a believer." So spend our Ramadan in such a way that when it exits, we feel the pain of it's going away. We feel the pain that it's no longer here. And then remember, my brothers, it is always important to worry about the Ibadah of other people than my own Ibadah. That means my means should not be the, my, my actions should not be the means of ruining someone else's Ibadah. Either I'm doing Atikaf, I'm coming to the Masjid, whatever I'm doing, I don't want to be, I don't want to be the means of doing someone else's worship. This is why Nabi (ﷺ) said, "Ida, when a person starts to argue with you, you tell him, 'Inni sa'imi, I'm fasting, that's it, don't talk." This is why back in the days, before Islam, they had the fasting of Taqwa. Quiet also. If you're fasting, you cannot talk. You're not able to talk. Imagine if you, if, if this rule was still valid. If this ruling was still valid. That during the day when you're fasting, you can't talk, this needs to be shut. And then, we will find ways how to text. I'm not talking, I'm texting. "Bani Israeel." Putting the net for the fishing at night. We're not fishing. The net has already been put out, we're not fishing. So that's why texting or talking is the same exact thing. Right? Communicating with someone, either you do it via text or via word, word of mouth, same thing. The purpose is to decrease our communication with people and increase our communication with Allah (ﷻ). We ask the Almighty Allah to grant us the blessings of this month. I ask Allah to make us among the fortunate ones who see the Rahmah of this month. We ask Allah to grant us the ability, the strength to utilize this month in the maximum capacity. And we ask Allah (ﷻ) to grant us the Noor of Quran in the month of Ramadan. Amin ya Robbal al-alameen. "Iza'kum Allah khairin, subhanallah wa bihamdi. Subhanakallahumma wa bihamdika wa nashadwa laa ilaha illa anta nastaghfiraka wa nathuba ilaiq." Iza'kum Allah khairin.